We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. I'm just going to ask very quickly if we have any agenda changes to be made to today's agenda?
No.
Okay, great. I have a very short chairs report. So just, I'd like to just make this statement. As months of planning begin to taper down, we now look to our teachers as they take the guidelines, policies, and research best practices and put them all into action. I can think of no better staff to meet these challenges in the year ahead. Wellfleet Elementary School teachers, we believe in you. Do we have any members who would like to speak?
I would, and I'm sorry to have to do this. I want to make sure that in some meeting coming up, we do have a way to talk about communication. First of all, to help me figure out what some of the lines of communication should be. But I was really concerned when I found that I learned, well, when I learned about the fact that the high school was closing from a neighbor of mine who has children in the high school. And I think I found out late in the day on Tuesday. And I don't think the article, there was an article in the newspaper until Wednesday. But I was concerned that we hadn't heard it as school committee members when we live in the town that has kids in it and were apt to run into people who have questions. And I had no idea this had happened. And I just found that very, very difficult. And I'd like us to take some time at some point in the future. And the not-too-distant future, this came up last winter as well before COVID. A similar kind of situation where I felt the school committee wasn't informed of something. And, you know, I was very embarrassed not to know that this had happened.
Thank you, Jill. I mean, thank you, Martha. I wrote down those comments. And we may even just reiterate it when we get to future agenda items. And we'll make sure that that can happen. Are there any other members wishing to speak at this time? Okay, I'm going to move on to citizens speak. Lee?
Hi, I'm not a citizen, but if I may, I just wanted to extend a thanks for your words, but also to invite members of the school committee to maybe walk through our building and just see what the new Wellfleet Elementary School looks like. Because if you haven't been in in a while, it's quite different. And I would think as a school committee member, you probably would want to know. You know, Martha spoke about communication. And one way to do that is to actually walk through the building. So when someone asks you a question, you can say, oh, yeah, there is no more library or whatever. And I just think that's important that the school committee take a tour. Just, you know, before the kids get here and the virus, you know, who knows what's going to happen. But just a, just a warm invite to come and, and join us and see what life is like now inside the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. That's awesome. Should we organize our tours through you, Mary Beth? An email to you asking, would that work?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you. I look forward to taking you up on that.
You know what I'll do is I'll send out a Google sign up. That'll be between tomorrow and the 15th.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other members speaking? I see Martha's hand is up.
I'm sorry. I do actually, in the spirit of talking about communication a little, also want to congratulate Mary Beth. She has been phenomenal sending out everything she can possibly send. I feel so completely informed about everything that is going on, everything that, all of the work that everybody's doing, but also the communications to the parents have been phenomenal. And I just want to publicly say thank you for that.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Anything else for member speak? I'm sorry, that was not member speak. That was citizens.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Seeing nothing, we're going to move on to priority reports, priority business. And we'll start with Mary Beth's report.
Hello. I'll start with our enrollment. To date, we have 89 students, which is about 82% of our student population that will be returning to in-person learning. Thirteen students have enrolled in the remote learning program. And six students will be homeschooled. Ten students are new to West. We had some changes with our Wes and EES remote teachers. What happened was Eastham families had changed their mine career original plan. So things had shifted with remote students now coming back for in-person instruction and for some in-person students to go out remote. As a result of that, we had a change with the kindergarten teacher who had to go back to the classroom for in-person instead of doing remote. So we were able to hire for a long-term subposition Jill Fiero. And Jill is an assistant here at the building. And she has worked in that kindergarten classroom for about 10 years. And she was trained in the tools of the mine curriculum that they had for educational assistance. So we have sort of run out of space right now. So I think Jill will probably be doing her remote teaching from home. Grade four, we had a grade four or five cohort. We no longer have to have that multi-age cohort. So grade four will still be taught by Marjorie Wallace remotely. And grade five will be taught by Jill Carlisle from Eastham Elementary School. And as Martha said, I have sent all of our training PowerPoints to you after I have shared those with the staff. And those include creating a positive working and learning environment. That also included self-care for staff while reopening guidance in the NOSA blueprint. And today's was the science of active learning and student engagement. And I just wanted to note too, that Mrs. Francis, our school psychologist, had partnered with me when we did our first, when I did the first one on creating a positive working and learning environment. So she took the perspective for the students' SCL needs. So she did that on a point. The school nurses have been knocking it out of the park. They are doing a three-part series on health and safety procedures and protocols. And last week, they even had David, Dr. David Pombo, who is infectious disease specialist with Cape Cod Health Care, present understanding the medical issues and research. It was excellent. We did receive a generous grant from Cape Light Compact. And the town was assessing some of its town buildings relative to energy consumption. And West was awarded $122,000 to install an energy management system. And that is to control and monitor the HVAC system and energy usage. So they averaged that the total cost savings annually would be about $4,512. The energy consumption audit was conducted by BRISE Engineering. We have had our HVAC system checked. The ventilation system has been cleaned. Highly, high-quality filters have been installed. In air quality diagnostics were conducted by Home Energy Raiders. And they are ventilation specialists. And they came out on September 2nd. On September 3rd, mechanical air control came out. And they're an HVAC specialist. They ensure that the system is operating properly. And they come out every summer. They often come out in the wintertime too, as sort of a surprise visit. Just to make sure that the system is working. The Home Energy Raiders production manager, Chris Mazzola, was up here. And he recommended, we have 11 vents that are outside. And I have one here to share with you. The vent is intended to take in fresh air. And the ones that were installed in the building are constructed so that they have these interlocking movers. So it does its job, or it's taking air in and it's keeping the elements out, such as driving rain. But with that, there's still some restriction to the fresh air coming in. So his recommendation was to take those out and sort of retrofit with mesh screening and a metal cover. So I just wanted to show you, for my show, to tell what the original mover that looks like. So as you can see, it's pretty complicated and blocking. So although the air comes in, he was recommending that with the metrics that it should be more air. So Mr. McHugh, as well as Lee Valley, have been working on that project since Friday. So we're almost done with that. The Home Energy Raiders will come back out to just reassess. It will be good to go.
Great. I think Jan had a question.
I do. A couple of questions, actually. Mary Beth, sometimes when you put your head down like that, I don't quite hear everything.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I just would like you, first of all, to repeat. I think you said there were 89 children coming into our school.
Correct.
There are 17 that are staying home. I missed that number.
Sorry about that. Thirteen are remote learners. And six students will be homeschooled.
As that, as has been for a while, I think, homeschool.
And students are new.
And how many are new?
Ten.
Ten new students. Okay. In a combination of both in-school and remote?
We have one of our new students that's remote. The others are in-school.
Okay. And the other question is, the things you sent that Martha commented on as being so good and helpful, and they are, and you made an effort to get it to me since you're, I don't have a Mac, but whatever. The first thing you sent us came from Desi. But the second thing on that same email was something called "creating a positive working and learning environment." And I wondered who created that one. I didn't think that was a Desi document.
Yeah. Now, those three PowerPoints that I sent, I created them using the Desi document. And then with creating a positive working environment, I did some research. I used Edutopia as well as Castle. And Castle, yeah.
And you created that. And I do hope that you share it with all the other principals because I thought it was really terrific work.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I have to.
Important, yeah. Good.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mary Beth? Okay, great. We're going to move on to Tom's report.
So thank you very much, Betsy. And I think I'll pick up to go a little bit deeper with the discussion on ventilation and airflow so that we're all on the same page. We are anticipating from our vendor on the, on the, on the heating and cooling system to have a full report that we can make available to the board and then to any citizens going forward. And the other piece that's going to be critical is in terms of the measurement of our inflow of air that Mary Beth mentioned, that we'll be getting reports from that company. As a matter of fact, I know they're working on those reports today because in both cases, we use the same vendors throughout the system. And I know that a number of our citizens would like to at least have an opportunity to see that report. And we'll make those available as soon as we have them. First to the board members, and then Mary Beth will have them to either send them out or have them available if a parent wants to receive a copy of that. That is a big issue for us, not only at our school district, but across the state relative to the measurement of intake of air and the quality of the air. And we believe that we've accomplished that. The, across the district, other than the work that we're currently doing at the high school. And at this point, as Martha alluded to, that we, I hope, in a temporary position where we're going to start out in the remote position while we finish some work on a couple of buildings at NOSA Regional High School relative to their, their performance with ventilation and air. We'll be talking directly with the region board Thursday night. And, and we have some plans going forward that we believe should put us back in a position where we can get back to the hybrid model, hopefully, in a matter of weeks. So that's to be seen as we go forward. And that has taken a tremendous amount of time. Both of the high school staff and the central office staff are working on this. I did have a, as always, an excellent conversation with Fred McGee from the FinCon. Fred and I had the opportunity to catch up on a few items. And, and he was making sure that everything was flowing nicely with the fire suppression issue that's going to be coming in front of the voters here in the near future. And assured me that they were comfortable going forward and would be a favorable vote from the FinCon to support that initiative going forward. So that's always good to hear. I, I would share with you that one of the great challenges we've had as a system, not by individual district, is the staffing. And we have had multiple people retire, in some cases, multiple people who have medical issues. And it's been very, very challenging. Carol Foggione, our HR person, has done an outstanding job in terms of the puzzle it's taking to make sure that we have everyone in place. And, and every course has a teacher that is qualified and well-prepared to teach this coming year for us. So, and I don't, I don't see that really stopping. I think it's certainly slowed down. But I think it could, it could be a situation where we see a couple of people going mid-year. I hope not. And, but we're, we're prepared for that as well going forward. As Mary Beth had mentioned, you know, we're in a model now of working on the teachings of our protocols, our standards, and other issues that we think are relevant to getting off to a, a strong start. I had the opportunity to meet the new teachers in a session with them alone and very, very pleased with the sort of candidates that we were able to hire. By Carol's account, we had robust pools to choose from in many cases. And that was a little surprising to me. And, but that, that was certainly pleasantly surprising. And so we're very happy with our hiring at that point. The, the other piece that I'd share with you is that Keith will be coming on soon to talk about the calendar. And that's a unique calendar to this year going forward. And he'll break that down for, for us. And we'll be looking for a vote today as we go around the circle of meetings over the next week. We'd like to get it finished up. Last piece, negotiations, negotiations, negotiations. We are at that point. The union is prepared to start going forward, and we are too. So I think it's safe to say we'll continue very, very quickly with the negotiation of contracts for labor reasons and negotiations potentially for some changes that are happening relative to our current contract and its language. And I anticipate an excellent opportunity to work with the union again. They've been excellent through this, this journey. And there's no reason to think it, it will change going forward. So I thank their efforts. I meet with Mark and Ann McConchie every week. Typically, it can be three to four hours in length, trying to solve certain issues and problems and things like that. And then I'd finish, and she deserves everything I'm about to say, but Mary Beth Rodman, the town of Proust, Wellfleet, is blessed to have her in the leadership role. She is outstanding and has stayed on top of every issue going forward. And I want to personally thank her for all her work through these last difficult months. So thank you, Mary Beth.
Thank you. I have to say, the staff, the school committee, school council, and the community make it so that I can do my job with ease. So thank you right back.
It's a collaborative effort, isn't it? But we do need a strong leader at the helm. That is true. Any comments, questions for Tom? Okay, I am going to invite Keith. I'm not sure. Oh, there he is. Hi, Keith. So Keith is going to handle the calendar, the school calendar item.
Great. Thanks, Betsy. Hi, everyone. Nice to be here. Sorry, I'm not in Wellfleet officially, but this is as close as I get. Although Mary Beth can come and take, take on a Brewster School as part of her principalship if she so chooses. We can split her between two towns, Mary Beth. So with, with the school calendar, the reason we're coming back to you is obviously you had voted a calendar at a joint school committee last spring/winter, in that range. And things have changed since then. So I wanted to share with you an updated calendar. And as Tom said, get your vote on the updated calendar. So the updated calendar, as you know, takes into account several factors, including the fact that Desi has allowed up to 10 days of staff training before school starts, but that schools have to start by September 16th. They've changed the requirements from 180 days down to 170 days. And they've changed the hours as well, down to 850 hours for the elementary level. Since NOSA has only eight days available from our start until the 16th, we've built in the eight days of staff training. And then we have an additional professional development day. But we didn't want to load in extra days beyond that. We figured the student learning time was valuable. So even though Desi is allowing 170 student day calendar, we have 175 student days. Reason for that is obviously it aligns better with the contracts and the work years for the various people. It gives kids more learning time. And just like any good obstacle, we're trying to seize an opportunity for professional development and training. So you'll see some half-days built into the calendar that can accomplish that. So let me share with you now my screen. It looks like, Betsy, if you're the host, you might have to give me permission, or Ann might have to give me permission. Who is the host of this meeting? Betsy, is that you?
I don't, I don't think it's me. I, I, when I look next to your name, I can't, it doesn't look like I can.
Okay, let's see. You're a co-host. Giovanna, maybe you can do it, or Mary Beth, I see you're a co-host as well. So if you click on.
I allowed, I did it, Keith.
Oh, great. Thank you. Hey, there we go. All right. So here comes the screen for you. So I've blown up the calendar, so just to make it easier to see on your screens. So as we said, first day for students is the 16th. We have our eight days in, September the 2nd, 3rd, 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, 14th, 15th. And as we continue down, you'll see some additional half-days in. So the 21st would be a professional development early release day. The 30th is early release for conferences. And that same theme continues. Some of these are conferences at other levels, like the 18th is the middle school conferences. But the elementary staff can use that for training. So it bounces back and forth in terms of the use of the half-day. Two half-days in December, and then bouncing back up. January, we still have our full professional development day on the 4th. That's built in. And then you'll see basically one early release day every month. So one in January, one in February, one in March, one in April. Okay. These early release days will also allow us to handle report cards and the time needed for that, along with conferences and professional development. Those were the highlights that I wanted to hit for you. And obviously, we are recommending this calendar for approval at each of the school committee meetings throughout the month. So we would be looking at the end of any discussion, a motion to approve this updated calendar. I will stop sharing and then turn it back over to Betsy if there are questions.
Okay, do we have, do we have any questions? Jan, it looks like you want to ask.
Yes. Keith, when you talk about 175 student days, how many of those are half-days?
So the total number, Jan, is a total of nine, but not all nine apply to every level.
Okay. So they probably will end up having 170 full days.
Yeah. And that was exactly our thinking as to why we had the additional staff days in there. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to make, have a comment or a question or make a motion? Martha, I see your hand.
I only want to know, somebody needs to be muted. Actually, it just stopped, but there was a lot of background noise. I don't know if other people had it. No, there's none.
Okay, not hearing it now.
It's a miracle. Okay.
Jill?
I make a motion, we approve the revised calendar.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, I see Laura seconded it. All right. And then all in favor, so we'll just go around and you'll just say your name. So Betsy Pontius, yes. Let's do Laura next.
Laura Bagatti, yes.
Jill?
Jill Putnam, yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Martha?
Martha Gordon, yes.
It passes. So there is some background noise. I'm not sure where it's coming from, but there are a lot of microphones on right now. So now they're going off. Okay, so we can just monitor it as best we can. All right. I need to go back to my other. Okay, so after calendar is final budget review, and Giovanna, are you doing that with us?
Yes, I will be.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we look at the final expenditure report for Wellfleet Elementary School for last year, we had a budget of $2,697,582. We expended year-to-date $2,429,259.55. We encumbered, the encumbrances represent payroll of $209,099, accounts payable of $26,732, for a total of $235,831 of encumbrances, leaving a balance of $32,491, which was returned back to the town of Wellfleet last year. Items to note in this expenditure report, we prepaid preschool in the amount of $28,374. And we also prepaid the Cape Cod collaborative tuition of $28,000. So the total prepays were $56,000. Tuition of $28,000. So the total prepays were $56,374, along with any other expenditures that Mary Beth had on her end-of-year spend-down plan. So, any questions on the final reporting?
It looks like there are none. Thank you, Giovanna.
You're welcome.
So we are going to move on to policies for a second read. We have three policies to look at tonight. Just scrolling in my notes here. Okay, so the first policy is the policy for the pandemic. Do we have any questions or comments on that one before we have a motion?
I move we accept it for a second reading.
Do we have a second? It looks like Martha is second. But Martha, do you also want to speak, or are you just seconding? Okay. So we'll go through the roll call. Betsy Pontius, yes. Laura?
Bagatti, yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Martha?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes unanimously. Our next policy is the policy for remote learning. Any discussion on that before making a motion? Seeing none, seeing Jan possibly. Jan?
No, no question. I'll move it, though, if you'd like.
Okay.
Policy for remote learning on a second reading.
Jill, second.
Thank you, Jill. So roll call. We'll do Betsy Pontius, yes. Laura? Okay, we have Jill?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Martha?
Yes.
Great. Third policy is on face coverings. Any discussion on face coverings? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the policy on face coverings for a second reading.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, got that from Martha. Roll call. Betsy Pontius, yes. Laura? Okay, Jill?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Martha?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous on that one as well. Great. So that brings us to item E in our agenda, which is the fire suppression. And I believe we have Jim Novak on, on board for that.
Yep. Hi, everybody. Good to see you again. Laura, it's nice to see you. You're new for me?
Yes, nice to see you.
Okay, fire suppression. You all know, we've been looking into the fire suppression. We, I walked the building with Fire Chief Crawley and, Fire Chief Crawley and C.A. Crawley Engineers back in May, and we got better estimates as far as what to put in. They came through the engineering services to do all the drawings was $105,000, and that's what we're going to see on Saturday at the town meeting. Well, we'll see 110 that we had in the budget. So, and that's, and they came with estimated construction costs of just over a million dollars, which was a lot. And, you know, they have various ceilings to deal with in the building. They're both have, they'll have wet and dry fire suppression systems. You need to dry up in the attic where it's not heated, because the water will freeze, and it's quite a big space up there in the attic. And they gave us a timeline, the figure of production of construction documents in the fall of 2020, put it out to bid. They have March 1st, they can go out in February, bids due back in April, and contracts signed in construction summer of '21. So that's where we are. Any specific questions you might have? And they did use a cost estimator to come up with the cost with this initial write-up.
Okay, see, anyone with questions for Jim?
Yeah, I have one. I do. I have one.
Thank you, Martha. Go right ahead, Martha.
Thank you. I, I think I was daydreaming. I wondered, you mentioned two different prices, one either 105,000 or 110,000, 100,000, $110,000 that we would see at the meeting. And then you mentioned something around a million dollars, and I'm wondering what that is for, the million-dollar piece, the whole project altogether? I think I just, yeah, okay.
That would be the, you know, to, to, the construction, the bid documents, putting it out to bid, and oversight of the construction at the end, tie it all together.
Gotcha. Okay. And that we wouldn't have to worry about in this budget.
No, that's probably, when they do the final engineering, they'll come up with a better estimate, because they'll have more information. And then that will go to town meeting in the spring.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks.
And I have a question for you, Jim. Are there any options for us in terms of grants or getting funding from a source other than ourselves?
Not that we know of right now. Chief Crawley wasn't aware of any. I'm not aware of any. If it were energy savings, maybe we can tap into KPLA compact, but there's not energy savings for this.
Thank you. Jan, it looks like your hand is up.
Yep. I'd like to ask, Jim, is there absolute necessity that we do this?
We did look in there. Chief Crawley made the recommendation three years ago.
Right, I know.
And we, and we talked to our architects in-house, our, you know, our architects, we have a house doctor, and they looked into it, and they says, yeah, you're required to put that sprinkler system in. We were required to do it when we did the renovate the addition in the 90s. And so, yes, there's, there's, we saw no way around it.
So it's an absolute. That's what I guess I'm trying to get, get to.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I see Martha's hand.
Okay, I just, I remember speaking, or-
Okay, I just lost power for a second. It went off and on. Anybody else?
Yeah, I did too, and some are frozen, but-
Okay, yeah, so maybe, it looks like Mary Beth and Martha are not back with us yet. Lee, I wonder if it's Wellfleet? Because I'm at the edge of town, so I usually don't lose tap power, but it looks like all our other friends have lost it. Let's give it a second. I have, I have joined this meeting now. Quick! Okay.
I don't think they're going to get a second.
Oh, look at this. They're all disappearing. I wonder if they'll come back?
Well, maybe they-
All right, let me just, let's just see where we were in our agenda. So we had to have a town meeting discussion. I just, I'm going to move on just because there's a potential, like, if we sit here and wait 10 minutes, then they'll come back. So, and then we can recap. So, town meeting discussion. So it was just odd to me that we're voting today. Wellfleet voters are voting today. So, and our only warrant is the fire suppression. So I know members were concerned about some sort of a strategy at the meeting, and I was just sort of thinking that if it passes, do we need a strategy? I mean, I think if it passes at the polls, it's going to pass at town meeting. And although I've never really been chair when something like this has happened before, so I don't know if there's any advice. Part of me wanted to sort of get on the, get right going and create like a little Venmo like you do, Tom, and just do a little announcement. But by the time I thought of that, it was already Saturday with Monday off. I wasn't going to be contacting Jim. I did sort of throw the idea by Mary Beth, and she, you know, she just said, well, I wouldn't be in charge of that. And then I'm like, well, I don't really know Jim that well. So I just thought that I'm going to consider a future agenda item. So what is your advice on town meeting? Do you have advice for us? Is there a strategy we should take?
So I, I think that, one, it is a little bit different, and, and you're going to get some feedback in terms of what the voters think anyways, and you should build on that. And I think that Jim's point of, and I think, I believe Jim will be there, is that this is a required of us to do. And, and we want to make sure that the building is as safe as possible and up to, up to all code issues in the town and in the state relative to school buildings, that it, it needs to be passed and needs to be done now.
So what is our, what happens if sort of, like, so if it gets voted down at the polls, and then everybody votes for it at town meeting, it's still moot, right? Is that correct?
I'd have to, I'd have to see. Every, every town has its own charter, so-
Okay, all right.
But I think, I, my conversations with Fred, I mean, they, he thought the meeting was going to be tremendously brief to, of his board to move it forward, going-
Okay.
In, in the affirmative. So that's great.
Okay, so do we want Jim, or the chair, or Mary Beth to speak to it at all, or do we just wait and wait it out and see? What, what would your, your advice around that?
So I think that depending upon, you know, if people want an explanation, Jim, Jim would be in a position to do that. If not, then leave the sleeping bear alone.
Okay. Okay. So I see we're getting some people back on. And Mary Beth, I see your hand up. Would you like to add into this?
Not about that in particular. Martha just called me, and she needs, oh, she's back in. Okay, never mind.
Yeah, I think people are going to come back in. But I, just to clarify, I didn't hold the meeting, because it was very hard to, to know what was going to happen. So I will recap our discussion. It looks like people are popping back in now. And then we can get, so I know I see Martha, and I see Lee's back. I got a-
Okay, did you lose power?
Mine just blipped for a second, so I never really left. It was, so, but it seemed like most people from the heart of Wellfleet lost. Martha, do, I can't hear you, Martha, so I'm not sure what's happening, because it doesn't look like you're muted. Can you hear me, Martha? Give me a thumbs up. Okay, do you want to write something in the chat box? Because we cannot hear you right now. And if you write in the chat box, then maybe we can hear. It looks like some people, I'm getting texts from- I'm not really sure who this is, but lost connection, attempting to get back on. Do you want me to send out another invite, do you think, would that work? Okay, so here we are again, sort of stalled. So I'm, I'm going to recap for Martha because, and then maybe I could follow up with Jill. I know that Jill was, who requested this to be on the agenda, and I wanted to honor that. At first, I had not had it on the agenda, because I just was mixed up with if it's already passed, what, what plan do we need to have? So, Martha, you can hear me still? After discussion, looks like she's gone again. All right. So after discussing our town meeting strategy, we are going to have Jim Novak there, who will be able to answer any questions if they come up, or, or make a short presentation. And if nothing comes up, then I think we're going to just let it go, where the meeting is designed to be briefer than in the past. We won't prepare anything, and we will sort of rely on Jim to do our communications. So Martha, can you give me a thumbs up if you agree to that? Does that sound like an approach? Okay.
Okay, we did, we did have a town forum last week that I went to and spoke, spoke to, and so did Chief Crawley on this topic. So we've already addressed some questions.
Okay, so people have been informed, and thank you. That was, that was very helpful. Perhaps you notified me, but I missed that one. Very helpful, because I think that, you know, just knowing that people got some information on it before, or had opportunity to get information. Okay, so I am going to move past this. I don't know, it's weird, because we don't really have a quorum anymore to do any voting. Oh, here's Laura. Here's Laura. Laura, so unmute yourself, so I can see if I can hear you, Laura.
Can you hear me?
I can. That's great. For some reason, that's okay. It was power out.
Oh, you all had it too. Okay.
We, we lost everybody. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm on my phone now, so.
Oh, okay, great. So I'm just going to recap for you, Laura. I did continue on with the meeting, even though it was only me, Evan, Tom. I'm not a holder-upper. We all have dinner to attend to at sometime tonight. So we discussed item F, which is our town meeting plans. And so Jim Novak has had a forum with locals and was able to do some Q and A during that, along with Fred McGee. And we know that Tom has spoken with Fred McGee. So there's been some communication. And so if there are questions at town meeting, Jim will take the stand and handle it. But if not, we're not going to sort of bring anything to it. You know, when the warrant comes up, we'll allow it to come up. We'll see what the vote was, and we will let it stand as is. Does that sound agreeable to you?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, we do have three out of our five, so I think we do sort of have a quorum. Do we, Anne, have a quorum now, if three of us are here, in terms of moving on? Okay. So reports and information, Martha, you were going to report on Strategic Plan Committee? No, no report to give. Okay, great. Future agenda items, I will recall for us that we would like to talk about communication. And the way I recorded it in my notes, and the way I'll bring it back to Tom's attention when we, when we meet, is I think what we need to do is sort of have a conversation about, to identify what kinds of things, like, we want communication about. It seems to me that perhaps we're not regularly communicated about region items, and perhaps to Wellfleet, that will be important. So I think we will hold a discussion on that in the future. I also would like to hold a discussion, if everybody else deems it appropriate, on some sort of plan around town meeting that, kind of like what, I don't know if anybody saw Eileen McElroy's little Vimeo video that she made about the importance of Article 10. And so that made it to my desktop. And I was just like, oh, we should do something like this, even if it's not a COVID or a town meeting, but we could push it out early, you know, in that sort of superintendent spotlight. So I would like to just get something like that going on, so that poor Mary Beth, who I was like Saturday morning, like, should we create one and send it out? And, you know, she was like, yes and no, Betsy. So anyways, just having a plan will make us more cognizant of it. Laura, I'm just going to ask you point blank, are there any future agenda items that you would like us to discuss or go over?
Not that I can think of.
Okay, great. So we have no other reports at this time on this agenda. So we'll move to approval of minutes. Does anybody have any corrections to the minutes? I see Mary Beth's hand. You're muted, Mary Beth, just so you know.
Just under my principal's report on page two, about halfway down, it has 10 by 12 canopy tents. I think that was my error, but they're 10 by 20. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, and I do have one just question about the notes, Anne. It was up by where Citizen Speak was, and it says Citizen Speak, none. And then you record Ryan Curly asking a question. So I didn't know if we needed the none there. so I didn't know if we needed the none there. Okay, great, anything else from anybody? Okay, so well, I'll take a motion for the minutes, I think, Laura, you might have to make that motion.
I motion to accept the minutes with the changes that were made, yeah.
Great, and I'll second that, and then just show me your thumbs all in favor, and I'll read the roll call. So I'm seeing Martha Gordon, yes, I'm seeing Laura nodding yes, and Betsy Pontius, yes. Okay, I'm expecting, anticipating a conversation with Rhonda about paying bills at some point soon. She usually sends me an email, so that agenda item will be dealt with, and I just need a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
Okay, and then I see a second from Martha Gordon.
Betsy, this is Jill, I lost my electricity, so I've dialed in on the phone if you can hear me.
Oh, that's excellent, how, how, when did you get here? Just now?
Just now, I've lost my electricity, and I can't boot up my computer now, but I'm on the phone, obviously. But I haven't heard of any, everything went black, and electricity has stopped here.
That happened to most members, and so I sort of carried on with the meeting. Jill, how about if I call you right after we've just motioned for adjournment, and I'll call you and catch you up on the town meeting discussion and the other items?
Oh, gosh, but I'm the one who wanted it to be on the agenda, so I would love to be able to say a few things, because I'm the one who requested it.
Okay, that's great, so I'm going to, not, we're not going to vote on adjournment, and we're going to give Jill a moment, Jill, I'm just going to front load...
And also, I have some agenda additions too, that I wanted to say.
Okay, great, no problem, let me just front-load what we talked about in your absence. So Jim Novak has had a forum with the townspeople and Fred McGee on fire suppression, question and answers, so that has happened. He will be at town meeting to present if there are any questions, and seeing that we vote first, we just, we had talked about at the meeting, sort of not saying anything unless it was needed. So now I'm going to give you a moment to talk about your thoughts.
Yes, because it wasn't about fire suppression that I wanted to have this on the agenda. So often, when we have a town meeting, there's a question about the school committee, or the school, rather, and also on the handout that we have for the, the meeting on Saturday, the school budget is on it, and, you know, when the town, when people vote on the budget, we are on that. So if there's any questions about the budget, the school, who is going to be there to have a concise response to it? So for instance, on page 35 of our town meeting booklet, we're on there for the elementary school, so that's why I wanted it on the agenda, who will be the spokesperson, if, and who's there in case somebody needs to respond, is anybody from the school committee here? Is anybody from the school here? Because that does happen.
Thank you, that's, that's important, go ahead, Tom.
Juvana, Jim and I can get together to make sure we have that covered for you. We'll have one of us for sure.
Okay, so any school budget questions will be handled by probably Jim, who's planning on being there anyway, perhaps?
More than likely, but we want to make sure he's comfortable.
Okay, great, anything else, Jill?
Yes, please, and often, somebody will want news of the school, so the moderator will ask, you know, is anybody here that can answer it? So for instance, Mary Beth, very informative, we have six new children, or whatever, that somebody will be able to answer things like that. You know, that we have an increment, increase in enrollment, which is really good for people.
I'm happy to speak to that if it comes up, I can just bring my notes and, and just give the most up-to-date information from this meeting in terms of enrollment, if that comes up and somebody asks.
Good, thank you, that's why I wanted it on, not because of the sprinkler, yeah.
Okay, great, so I am planning on attending.
Did we get to agenda items for October, because I have that too?
So future agenda items, go ahead, Jill, you may just proceed with what you would like to add.
Okay, please. Definitely to put on October, the, we need to choose a delegate for the mask resolutions.
Okay, thank you.
And also, in relationship to that, to also have resolutions to, to discuss, because we will be voting, for instance, on standardized testing and things like that.
Okay, so we'll get those...
And just informational, Saturday, November 7th, at 1 o'clock is when there will be the delegates' remote meeting, it might not be remote, it's, it's to be announced, so that's it, thank you.
Okay, so I just want to clarify that I captured what you said. So on the October agenda, we really do need to select a delegate, which would be one of us, for the mask resolution, so we need to have that, and then we also want to have some time to discuss this year's proposed resolutions, is that correct?
Yes, you nailed it.
Great, thank you so much, and I'm glad you got back on.
Oh, gosh!
It's a little nerve-wracking when you feel like you're the only one not there, but it was, really, everybody was wiped out, Jill, so...
Yeah, but you guys have gotten your computer working again, I haven't.
Well, I didn't lose power, I know, I, just my power blipped, and so Tom, myself, Jim, and Anne Teft, we didn't lose power, so we were kind of here.
Yeah, very good, thanks.
All right, so we have a motion to adjourn, I will I, I believe everybody's in favor of that motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, so we will adjourn the meeting, thank you, everybody, and we'll see you soon, Tom, feel free to reach out if there's anything else about time, town meeting that you need, would like me to be involved in, okay?
All right, perfect, thanks so much.
Bye, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.